Well, welcome everyone. Today is palindrome day. 12121, 12121. You said I throw that in there. English teacher stuff. My name is Carol Poliam. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Woodby Island at this time, and I will be your host this evening. Special thank you to the Island County Commissioners for meeting with us today. I want to welcome Melanie Bacon, Jill Johnson, and Janet Sinclair. Now, as much as I miss seeing you all at the country club, I'm glad I'm not dragging you out of your homes on this cold January evening. Our format will be standard question and answer. I will pose a question to the Commissioners and let them share their perspectives. I invite members of the audience to use the chat if you would like to respond or request a follow-up. Those questions will be addressed at the end, time permitting. If we don't have time, and we will end on time at 6 o'clock, I will work with the Commissioners to compose a follow-up email that will be sent to AA, excuse me, AAUW and the Woodby Island League. I would like everyone's video to remain off and audio to remain off during the meeting today, just so that we give Commissioners as much airtime as we can. I want to thank Becky Boltie, who'll be watching the chat feed, and I'd like to thank Karen Bolstad, who is recording this event and will post it to our website, L W B Woodby dot org. We want to keep our promise for a one-hour meeting, so let's get started. And let's start by having each Commissioner briefly introduce herself.
Okay, I'll start because I'm number, I'm District One, so.
Good idea.
I know my map, I'm here for so. So I'm Melanie Bacon. I'm the new, I'm the new kid on the block with regard to being a county commissioner. I've been in there for three weeks now. And I represent District One, which is a South Woodby up through just north of Coopville. And I'm, I'm having a really great time so far, and I'm really loving working with Janet and Jill. It's, it's been, I think, a really good three weeks so far. We'll see if they think the same thing, but yeah, I'm having a good time.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Johnson. I'm the Commissioner representing District Two. I just started my third term, so this is my ninth League of Women Voters presentation. And so I'm happy to be here. I do miss the country club. It's nice to interact with people in person, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
So I'm Janet Sinclair, and I represent District Three, which is North Woodby and on over to Camino Island. And I'm in my third year, third term, third year. And yeah, this has been an amazing journey, and I really love the work. I do. I really love the work. And I just want to point out that in addition to January 21st being a palindrome, it's also the one-year anniversary of the COVID outbreak in Washington State.
Oh, that's, um, that's a sad milestone. Whoa. Let's get started by discussing the pandemic, and I know we've had some things come out in the papers the last few days about Woodby's organization with other counties and with some interest in what the state is doing. So here's your question. So as COVID-19 cases have been rising in Island County, what leadership role should Commissioners take to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in 2021 and assure that the vaccine is effectively distributed?
Yeah, how do you want to, how do you want to do that? Because I think we all have a real similar answer on this one, because we're real excited about something that happened this week.
Oh, great. Well, I think that you can just decide, somebody can jump in. You can wave to each other or something, and then you can, just when you're done, I'll move on.
Jill's the chair this year, so she could.
Well, what I was going to say is I've talked the most to this, this group on a lot of these issues, and so I would, I think it's important, Melanie, for them to hear your voice. Janet, for you've been in a couple of years for them to hear your voice, and then I'll go at the end, not because I don't have anything to say, but because we've heard me talk the most. So why don't, Melanie, you share our exciting news. Janet's the new chair of the Board of Health this year, so she can talk about our public health response to some of these things, and then if there's anything smart left unsaid, I'll say that.
That's fair.
Thanks, Jill.
So the, the previous board was extremely proactive with regard to the seeing where vaccine distribution was going to be coming. So, for example, it was clear Pfizer was, Pfizer was going to be one of the main players. Pfizer needed to have, have cold storage. So our board last year purchased these cold storage units and, and then just set them up so that when the vaccine was ready, we had a place to put them, unlike many, many other organizations that weren't, weren't as, as forward-thinking as Island County was. So we kind of got a heads up or a step forward with regard to vaccines. Right now, what's happening is the only thing that's stopping us right now is actual vaccine availability. That is the thing that's stopping us right now. And this week, the exciting news this week is that the board approved almost half a million dollars to be spent on two pop-up clinics. One on Camino and one on South Woodby, and Janet can talk about the Camino one. I'll talk about the South Woodby one a little bit. It's going to be managed through, through, Woodby Health is going to be doing this. And we're hoping with these clinics, which will operate four days a week, six hours a day with professional vaccine people, people doing the vaccines, we're hoping to do 200 vaccines a day is, is our, is our intention for this. And it's going to last for six months. We're very excited about this. We also are really working on having direct delivery to our shut-ins, you know, down in South Woodby. We have a lot of older people who really don't use the internet. They're not really good at maybe going online and signing up for appointment or whatever. We're, we're planning on, we're working with different organizations in the community to try to, to go directly to those individuals to provide them with their vaccination. So Island County is really, we're, we're going to do every single thing we possibly can to get our population vaccinated, vaccinated as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Well, focused on the beginning part of your question, which is around the leadership role of the Commissioners, and emphasize that when, I've been really thinking about this, because a year ago, when this broke out and we were trying to figure out what to do, and Helen and I were in Washington DC with the National Association of Counties. Commissioner Johnson called an emergency session in Island County, again, with that foresight, immediately declared a declaration of emergency, set up our emergency planning team, and our, our effort as leadership has been to take every tool we get as that comes into our toolbox. The first was that declaration of emergency, and then it was beginning to pay attention to what the science and the data we were getting, beginning our outreach and education. We invested in a, in a communication campaign, Gail the Whale. I love Gail the Whale, and all the efforts we've done to help the, the public understand what role they had in being safe and preventing the transmission of the disease, and that doesn't go away with the vaccine. As we move into vaccination delivery, we still need to maintain distancing, not go into large gatherings, wear our masks, especially between the first and second dosages, and up to two weeks after. And the experts are telling us that, that those continued practices will go on until we reach 75% coverage in vaccination across our region or across our nation. I don't know. Anyway, so, so we invested in that communication and strategy. We started identifying testing partners. We did a mass testing event in May and June and tested thousands of people. I think it was four or 5,000. I don't know if you remember the exact number, Jill. And with that, we're able to move into phase three, because we always had an eye on the impact this was happening on the people of Island County. Public health is more the, more than the absence of disease. You know, the world, that's not my quote. That's from the World Health Organization. And so I appreciated the advocacy of my colleagues in the economic recovery work we did. We invested over a million dollars in small business grants. And so that is part of how we've built towards a healthy community. We did case investigation and contact tracing, which I know has come under some criticism, but up until the surge, we actually were doing quite well in that area. We've continued to do the vaccination planning. Commissioner Bacon talked about our investments in ultra-cold storage. We got out there quickly to make sure we could get a couple of those big freezers as soon as possible. And we've been working with all of our healthcare partners and so forth to begin getting vaccinations out and about. And I'm extraordinarily grateful to my colleagues that we're able to have a regional approach in the investments that's going to be made for Camino Island and South Woodby.
Thank you.
I mean, I think the only other thing I would say is, is again, Commissioner Sinclair is correct that we really made sure that we were focusing on the human service element of the pandemic response, the public health element and the economic element. We know that if we save lives, but we've destroyed people's livelihoods, that we, we haven't succeeded. And so we've really made sure, tried to make sure that we've made investments on all fronts, so that people are still stably housed, that they have jobs to go to, and that we're keeping them safe. And so I, I'm, I'm very thankful that we all three shared that focus, and that focus has continued with Melanie, who was playing a large role in a lot of our planning as the HR director, making sure we were communicating to staff that we were aware. Again, it starts at home. So if our staff got sick, we weren't be able to serve the community. So we really have been working as a team on this for a long time. The only other thing I think that's important from a leadership perspective is that you lead by example. And so again, when you talk about large gatherings, I appreciate that the league does this by Zoom and doesn't try to pull everybody together. It is hard to do. I don't love my mask. This is no secret. I don't love it. But I wear it, and Janet has hers. I wear it, and everybody around me wears theirs, and I keep my circle small and my bubble small, because I think it's important to not just preach, but also to live it out. And I think from a leadership perspective, regardless of your thoughts on it, ideology, anything, we've got, this is a public health problem with science behind it, and you need to do the things it takes to slow the spread of it. I think every elected leader has a responsibility to lead by example.
Well, thank you. It's, you said something, Jill, about maintaining the economy and housing and living wage jobs. That leads me into our next question about wage earners on Woodby Island. Do, what is your vision for, for increasing living wage jobs in Island County?
I mean, I, I really had planned to defer a little bit to Commissioner Sinclair on this question. She's been championing a lot of our broadband issues, and broadband is the cornerstone of increasing living wage jobs. I am on a countywide tourism board. A lot of our economy is tourism-dependent, and so I work with a group that is very proactive in getting people to visit here and, and, and become tourists on Woodby Island. But those jobs, we have to be careful. Those jobs are not always living wage. They're great jobs. We're thankful to have them, but they're not always the kind of jobs that support mortgage payments and insurance payments and different types of things. So the real big lift that Commissioner Sinclair is working on around broadband is really at the crux of your question, so I'm going to pass it over to her.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate the, the recognition. It's, I think the issue with broadband is, is about the, what the pandemic demonstrated to us is the importance on broadband economic, educational, and health equity, right? If we don't have broadband, how do we do remote working? How do we support small businesses and getting their product online? How do we make sure that families have access to technology for education? And we know that education is a, is a key piece of the career, the ladder to careers with living wage jobs. So our state didn't realize how important that was until we got to this place. So yes, we've been working on that. We finished Port of Coopville, the broadband feasibility study, and we're starting on a long-term strategy. None of this is going to change quickly because of the fact that what we're looking at is major infrastructure improvements. So we're working with partners like Wave and Comcast and, and Zipley. We submitted a grant in September for Zipley to begin those infrastructure improvements, and hopefully in five years, we'll have a much stronger span. I wanted to focus for a second on something that has become a deep concern to me around living wage jobs. In most of our community, it takes two parents, two parents working to be able to support a family, to keep a roof over their head, to have that even one car, to have food on the table and, and at least some recreational money. And what we've seen with this pandemic and the childcare crisis in our county is the fact that more and more women are leaving the workforce. I just had a conversation today with a friend who's had to resign from her position because she cannot find childcare. And so we're forcing families to live on one income who are usually living on two incomes, and we need to address that childcare crisis. So I've been grateful for the Island County Public Health staff that embraced that on top of everything else, obtained a grant and pursuing a grant to understand, not that Island County is going to be providing childcare, but to understand what is the depth of the problem, who are the key partners, and what we can do to build capacity for childcare in our communities. We need to make sure that we have, we're not, we're, we have equal opportunity, and that includes for women, and we've lost a significant percentage of women in the workforce during this pandemic.
I, I had a conversation this afternoon with Senator Murray's Northwest Regional representative, and we talked about this very issue about how the impact that this has had on, on women's able, ability to work, really, because, because of lack of childcare. We, we, we lost a public health nurse in, I think it was November, because she, she had to make a choice, and, and, and she had two little kids, and, and that's the direction she had to do was, was to stay home with her children. So, and this affects, affects everyone. So I was, I was assured that this is an extremely important issue with Senator Murray, and we will be looking for what the, what the federal guidelines and directions going to be on that. I also want to say, and this is from a personal perspective, this is certainly not anything I've ever had a conversation with my colleagues about, but I'm really grateful that the indication we're getting from the federal government is that they're going to be going to $15 an hour minimum wage. I, I'm very, very grateful about that.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, according to recent reports from Woodby News, Times, and Cuomo News, there are high numbers of turnover across multiple departments in the county, especially in the Health Department. What steps will you take to retain staff, meet their needs, and promote a more open and safe environment to work in?
Melanie.
I knew you were going to ask me that.
I'm unaware of some of that data about multiple departments, but Melanie, maybe you can help answer this.
I can't answer that, because what, what those two entities did not do is contact Human Resources and ask for a turnover report. It, it simply is not true. There is turnover, but there's less turnover in 2020, in my opinion, and that's just looking at it generally from my perspective. It's not based on the data. My perspective as the HR director was that the turnover in 2020 was less than the turnover in 2019. Now, I've asked our Administrative Services Director and Human Resources to provide us with a turnover report next month, so that we can actually have real data, so that the board can have this conversation. But we did see a, a, a couple of nurses leave in December, and as I think it was Commissioner Johnson pointed out at our meeting the other day, we're seeing that all over the nation. This is a terribly, terribly stressful time for people working in public health. It just is a terribly, terribly stressful time. So, so the question, I, it's hard for me to answer the question without saying those elements of the question are simply not based in data or fact, and, and that's where I stand on that.
Thank you. You know, with that, one of the reasons that we like to have you is to have these conversations and, and interpret what we read and what we see. So thank you very much, Commissioner Bacon.
From an administrative perspective, it, it is difficult for a Board of County Commissioner as a body of three to, to provide administrative leadership and effective oversight and discipline. It's, it's the structure of things. And one of the things this pandemic has highlighted, and it's been something that the board has been watching for a while, is that for us to come together and have conversations in the most appropriate and transparent way is very difficult to do and still protect the privacy of our employees. Nobody wants to call out employee to say, you, you need to do a better job. I don't love it when people do it to me, and, and it's hard when you have to do it to other people. So what, the, the other thing I think that is important to understand as we're talking about county culture and workplace culture is that the board made an investment in an Administrative Services Director, and that person's role is really an operations person, that they're, they're overseeing HR, IT, some internal operational policies, so that we get consistency within departments. Some department heads are more lenient than other department heads are, so staff feels disparity in their workplace. That goes to a morale issue. How come so-and-so gets to leave early, but my department head doesn't let me? By hiring this Administrative Services Director, we made an investment during a pandemic to say, no, we want consistency around our policies, the implementation, and to make sure appropriate oversight is in place, so that any employee in Island County is working under the same parameters that, that it is a fair environment, that they know the process for reporting a complaint if they have one, and that we add more consistency around that. It wasn't that I think the board was doing anything wrong. It's just the design of having three of us do it allowed problems to maybe fester a little bit longer. This new investment gets things dealt with much quicker, and I think you're going to see a workplace culture change, because there is a more clear line of accountability, and I think that investment will pay dividends for us.
That sounds great. Thanks for that information, Jill.
Yeah, could you? I think that's accurate. I think I'm going to talk about the very last part of that question, which is the importance of a safe environment for employees. Never more important than this year has been the importance of safety for our employees. And so one of the pieces that we continuously are trying to reach out, and we can always do better on communication and outreach and support to our employees. That's a continuous, that's a continuous goal in any organization I've ever been in where you're doing continuous quality improvement. But the, the safety focus and making sure that our employees feel safe, we've spent a lot of time on that issue. We've created a remote workforce. We invested a lot of money in computers and technology, so that those staff who were vulnerable or at risk could work remotely during the pandemic. We've flexed schedules, so we had employees who only would come in after everyone else had left, so that they could be safe and protect themselves. And we have continuous, I just this week had a wonderful conversation and opportunity where I had a staff member over on Camino raise a concern about some safety issues, and within days, her concerns were responded to. So that focus on safety is something that this board takes very seriously.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Looking at business again, but in relation to the environment, I think we're concerned about our, our wonderful Woodby Island. And what are your ideas about business development in our county that could increase living wage employment while not having a negative impact on the environment?
I, I think, again, I think that Jill answered it, and Janet answered it, really. It's, it's about this, this county becoming a location for people whose job allows them to work from home. I think that that really is going to be, that's, that's really the direction that, that I think, I, I, we haven't had this exact conversation in a board meeting, but I believe that that's where the board wants, wants to encourage. We want to encourage that type of activity. And, and again, as they said, it really is about having broadband access. We, we need, you need broadband access for, for children, for workers, for everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else want to weigh in on that one? I, I, I agree. I think you was answered pretty significantly before.
I think the uniqueness of Island County and the thing that I love about it is just this incredible beauty where we live, right? I mean, who can't love what we see? And then the other piece is the, the wonderful nature of living in a rural community. So for me, supporting our environment and the value of ecotourism, which is an important part of what draws people to Island County, and agritourism and the importance of supporting our farmers. So everything from the innovation of the Woodby Island Grown Coalition to the efforts to find new ways to do agriculture, such as regenerative ag, and some of the amazingly creative work that is supported by our partnerships with Wazoo Extension and our Conservation District. Those are living wage jobs that not only support families, they support the quality of life that we love so deeply in Island County.
One of the things.
Oh, sorry. No, no, no. I was just going to, I thought we were done, but you go ahead.
You can be done.
Well, we have plenty, we still have plenty of time. We're only halfway through our time.
So one of the things pandemic has highlighted for me is, is the innovativeness of people, right? So especially younger generations, that I take a more traditional look at what jobs are, and yet then I go on technology, and there are people making a living recommending products and becoming influencers and using technology and doing online classes to teach people what their passion is. And so I think also, as we're talking about an economy that doesn't have a strong burden on the environment, that it's one thing for us as leaders to try to anticipate what they are, but if we look downstream to younger generations, they're actually already figuring that out and doing that. And I think part of our job is just to get out of their way and not create barriers to some of their creativity and inventiveness. That, I mean, I'm amazed at the number of people who are just figuring out ways to make a living in a very difficult environment, and it kind of shows you the human spirit, and it also shows you that they're not dependent on brick and mortar to necessarily earn their income, and we need to make sure that we are able to foster that kind of economic growth.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
I always thought you were the younger generation, Jill.
They're being mean to me because I turned 50. And so it's over. I had to say goodbye. I planned on being more mature this year, but I only made it to one meeting, and then that, so we're going to try again in February.
That was one of my best decades, Jill.
It was, okay.
Yeah. All right, are we ready for the last question? You've talked about some purchases you've made, some money you've been spending, computers and freezers and hiring new people. And do we have a budget shortfall? What do you believe county government's priorities should be in the face of an anticipated budget shortfall? You've spent some great money. I'm excited about the money you've spent, but what's going to happen?
Well, the money that we spent wasn't money out of current expense or so forth. This was, as, as you all remember, you've seen the headlines. You think about the CARES Act that sent funding down from the federal government to the state government to us. A lot, that was part of the money we spent on our investment. So we, we focused on utilizing the CARES funding and the public health funding that came down in order to make these investments and support our community.
One of the things that I want to give another real kudos to the previous board for was, as Janet mentioned, they received CARES dollars. A lot of other counties received the same kind of CARES dollars. So we got, we, we had what, four million in CARES dollars and the plus other grants that we received. A lot of other communities received those dollars, but what Island County did, which was pretty unique, was we passed those dollars directly to the citizens. We helped businesses. We helped people with their rent. We helped people with their mortgages. We, 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 we were passed through to the citizens who were in need with those dollars. And so that, that was, that was huge that we did that, and, and I think the previous board really deserves a lot of credit for having taken that, that type of compassionate action for, for the citizens. They, they also, the previous boards for at least the last 15 years were, were very frugal boards, and they had built up a really strong reserve. And so when it looked like we were going to need a little extra money this year, they pulled from the reserve, and I'll let Janet and Jill speak to that. But because they were good savers, we do not have a budget shortfall. We planned for the emergency, and now we're here and we are able to live on our, on our money.
I'd echo that, Commissioner Johnson. I think Melanie is speaking to something that I've admired about the past boards. So I'd love you to talk about the fiscal prudence that past boards have had and how that helped us last year.
So the board, every year, there's a certain amount, we budget fully loaded, is what we call it. We budget for every position to be operational for the full year. We budget every program to start in January when some start in June. And so what that does is it gives you a little buildup at the end of each year of unspent current expense dollars or even a dedicated fund, some unspent money. And then, and then every year, we would bank some of that, put it in the savings account, and then unload some of it for one-time expenses. So it was a combination of making these investments with that, that money that we saved up throughout the year and then saving it. And at the start of the pandemic, we had about a $12.5 million fund balance, and that's in our current expense fund. And yet, keep in mind, our current expense is about $27, $30 billion. So it was a good percentage, almost 50%, not quite 50% of our operating current expense in, in fund balance. What that allowed us to do in 2020, when the pandemic hit, was to operate as business as usual. We knew that if we had to find We knew that if we had a financial shortfall, we would be able to pull from fund balance to cover that. We anticipated that we wouldn't have sales tax revenue coming as high. We didn't want to lay off staff. We did delay hiring a little bit in some instances. But as the year went on, we, we recognized like, okay, we're able to stabilize our county services by pulling from our savings account to meet operational needs. Then the projections came in when we did the 2021 budget. Sales tax revenue was not quite as low. I mean, I think, you know, as much as people have many feelings about the Navy being here, we are very stable because we have federal paychecks. And most of our services are dependent upon individuals who either have retired, retirement checks or Navy paychecks. Or so our county, although we never get really rich in the boom times, we never get quite as poor in the bust times either. So our sales tax revenue was coming in pretty stable. Our property tax, people were delivering, they were paying their property tax. We're tracking it the same as previous years in terms of payment. So we didn't take quite the revenue hit that we anticipated. That allowed us to look ahead to 2021 and say, okay, this fund balance we thought we might use to stabilize us in 2020, we now can use that same amount to stabilize us in 2021. So we didn't have to make the draconian cuts that we saw neighboring counties make. We didn't have to do furloughs. We said, we're going to take that money and operate business as usual through 2021. What that's going to mean for 2022, though, is that we're not going to be able to do as many one-time expenditures or investments in new ideas. But it also, what we're watching is as the revenues come in and we charge against these different COVID funds that we get, that we will likely be able to replenish some of that fund balance that we planned on outlaying this year and be able to use that same amount again to stabilize for 2022. And so that amount of money that we saved up is allowing us to kind of weather these storms. And then we'll just catch right back up to our cycle and be able to begin making aggressive investments again. But, but where counties like Watcom County, I mean, they really went in there and cut their workforce. We just aren't facing that situation. And I'm, I'm very thankful that we have a financial strategy that has, has focused not only on the immediacy of it, but also the future. And the priority always in our budget is, we talked about stabilization of programs, but really what that means is we prioritized ensuring that we weren't laying staff off. We didn't want them working in a culture where they were worried about their jobs. So we use that savings account to say, we're going to make sure that everybody who's employed now will be employed at the end of the year in their current position. And, and that's what that fund balance was for because we can't get our programs out the door without people. And so when you're asking about like, what are the priorities of county government? Our priorities are making sure that we are able to keep our folks employed because without our people, there are no programs.
Thank you. Well, that's the end of our, the formal questions that the board designed for our discussion tonight. I'd like to invite Becky Boltie, and I need to find you on my participants list. There you are. And I'm going to ask you to unmute and ask you to, I'm going to ask you to start your video. And Becky Boltie's joining us. Becky's a new board member at the League of Women Voters, and she's just jumped right in with both feet. How is the chat going?
Well, we do have one question, and it's, I guess, addressed to anyone. You have discussed improving broadband internet connection for the island, but what can the county do to improve cell phone coverage? You want me to respond?
Sure.
Okay. So I have been working with Sprint. Not yet have I connected quite as much to T-Mobile. But because some of our, our internet coverage is delivered through 4G services, you know, your cell phone, I've been tracking that as well. Many, this has, this is controversial, but many of our cell phone providers, Verizon and Sprint, are investing in 5G in our islands as well as increasing capacity of their 4G towers. So this has nothing to do with county government. This is one of those places where government doesn't really have a role here. This is something that the free market economy is going to, is responding to, recognizing as our population increases and the market for cell phone users increases, they're investing in cell phone tower upgrades. They've invested in cell phone tower upgrades in North Whidby, Oak Harbor. And then they have additional upgrades happening in Central Whidby. And then as well, Whidby Telecom has made a lot of investments in this area. So we don't need to step in and government, government sometimes needs to stay in our lane. And this is one place where they're recognizing the power of the market and responding by adding additional coverage of cell towers across our county.
Thank you.
Okay, there. Are we ready for the next question?
I think so. Thank you.
This is from Molly. Is the goal of 200 vaccines per day just for the two pop-ups or is that for the entire county, including Whidby Health and Island Drug?
I'll, I'll, I'll address what I think it is, and then we'll let the, the others might have a different perspective on it. So that is for the two pop-ups. However, I want to state that what those two pop-ups are going to do is add capacity to Whidby Health and Island Drug. So Whidby Health would then, people who are in the central Whidby area would be able to go to Whidby Health, and they wouldn't have to be fighting for vaccines with people from South Whidby. Same thing with Island Drug. Right now, you have all these people from all over Island County have signed up for shots in Oak Harbor. They won't have to go to Oak Harbor, so there'd be more shots available for those people who live in Oak Harbor. Since the pop-up down in South Whidby is going to be managed by Whidby Health, I have every confidence that Whidby Health must have a plan with regard to expanding their vaccine delivery as much as they can here at the hospital. But I have not heard what that is. And, and thank you for getting me thinking about that. And, and we will reach out to try to find out what that is. Unless, Jill, do you, do you have any idea? I think you spoke with Ron the other day.
I, I wasn't actively listening. What was the question? I was trying to do the math of 200 in my head and I got distracted. Sorry about that.
Have, have either of you heard anything from, for example, Whidby Health about how they're planning to respond to vaccine delivery?
I mean, I know what they're doing right, right now. You, you make the appointment and they're doing kind of batches of individuals. And I think that their same plan exists where you register to whichever population you're in. So they're in the 1B. That the addition of the pop-up, what the one on South Whidby that will be run by Whidby Health, they'll, they'll staff it the same way. I think, well, they'll schedule appointments and do groups of five or so. I think that's what the vaccine allows you to do, depending on the types of vaccines we get. So they may schedule it different if they're using the Moderna. That all of this, so the way it mathed out, and I was trying to reverse math it, is that we anticipate kind of a, a goal of 20,000 vaccinations per each site. So South Whidby would have the capacity to do about 20,000 vaccinations. Kameno would have the capacity to do about 20,000 vaccinations. Whidby Health would have capacity to do vaccinations through their system. And then, of course, at the pharmacies that are recognized as providers and the, the Navy Health System also has, is moving to the 1B population. So if you're eligible to receive your healthcare on base, they've also been given a supply of vaccines to be able to, to reach some of the population as well. But for all of this, that part that we can't control is vaccine availability. So we're making investments with the funds we have to enhance the ability to distribute as quickly as we can. But, but you can't vaccinate faster than you get vaccines. And so that same kind of backlog still exists. And so I kind of want to manage some expectations. I mean, our briefing the other day at the Board of Health had the hospital on that day tracking down a shipment that they were expecting to arrive that had yet to arrive. And so they were spending that day saying, where'd our vaccines go? It, the system, although investments are being made, still has some glitches in it. And, and until those vaccines really start flowing, that's going to be our limitation. But when they do flow, we didn't want the limitation to be human capacity on our end.
Right. So we're investing in, in capacity. And I think just to tweak a little bit about what Commissioner Bacon said, at full capacity, we should be able to be delivering those numbers. We can't deliver those numbers now. And the re, if you, if you go to the, if you sort of back it up, the state has a goal of 45,000 doses a day in Washington State. And currently, they're only able to deliver about 15, 12,000 to 15,000. And that's because of inventory capacity. And so what we're building is beginning to build the human capacity and the logistic structure and all of that so that when inventory is released and we start seeing the 100 million doses that we're being promised in 100 days, that that will, that will, we won't be then staging these clinics. Then we will have them staged and ready to go. And in the meantime, we're delivering a lot of dosage. We're across the county through Whidby Health, Island Drug, and with the approved, remember, these all have to be done through approved providers. We only had three approved providers until this week when they added two more approved providers. We're not unique in that way. Other counties were backlogged. And that at least has been unjammed. And so we're seeing more approved providers across our region. And that will help if you get your primary care through somewhere else. You should be able to begin. We're seeing Everett Clinic has begun to schedule appointments. Providence has begun to schedule appointments. Island Hospital has begun to schedule appointments, and we still have the ongoing capacity. I have to give great kudos to Whidby Health for getting out there and getting out there fast.
Yeah. I, I think what, what you hear the county commissioners say is that if there is vaccine available, we will make sure that there's a way for the citizens to access it. That's, that's our priority.
Wow.
And because I'm watching the chat and the time, and we don't have a new question, I'm going to add in another layer of conversation that might be interesting. So at our last Board of Health, as, that I think might be interesting to this group, but it should be interesting to all groups. At our last Board of Health meeting too, we specifically talked about the fact that the vaccine, vaccine process right now is very technology-driven. You go online, you make an appointment. You have to know how to read the website to do that. You have to have access to technology to do that. You have to have the mental acumen to understand how to do that. That leaves a lot of people out. So Melanie did talk about some outreach efforts we're taking. But we, in this process, already have a group working on the social equity component of these vaccines so that if you're in a population that, that doesn't speak English, that, that you shouldn't be left behind getting your vaccine because our forms are, are designed for English. Or if you're in a population that doesn't understand how to access technology or can't afford to access technology. I mean, these vaccines aren't for, and I say this respectfully, but these vaccines aren't for overeducated white individuals, right? They're, they're not for, for me. They're for all of us. And so we're really working hard. See how I thought I described myself as overeducated? I like to compliment myself. That's not true. But, but, but these, but we're talking about the fact that there are populations of people in our community that we need to make extra efforts. And so work is being done with Human Services and our outreach workers to go out to these populations that we know will not come in, right? They don't come in for their behavioral health appointments. They don't, they don't, there, some of them are afraid to interact with government. Some of them may think we need to know their citizenship in order to get a vaccine. That's not what vaccination's about. And so we're working in this process. Public Health is working, Human Services is working to make sure that at the end of it, we don't look up and think we left an entire group of people behind. And I think it wasn't part of your question, but I think it's part of all of our hearts to make sure that we are really clear about the fact that we're a government for all people and that these systems need to be designed to get to every single Island County citizen. So I just want to talk, I wanted to put that out there because the board has been very adamant about that. And I think our citizens also need to be advocates for that as well, that, you know, it's easy to tell your friends, sign up, sign up, sign up. But, but also being aware of all those folks around us who, who may not be getting the same knowledge and access that, that it's on all of us to make sure people know that this vaccine is available.
Thank you, Jill. I was going to leave it open for you to add things that we're passionate about. So you were one step ahead of me. Becky, did we just have something else come up in the chat?
We heard Christie said, I've spoken to many people who believe the vaccine costs money.
Nope. It's free. It's the, the federal government's doing the vaccine or other entities are doing the vaccine, and the county is going to make sure that you, that, that it's delivered to you. You don't have to pay money for this vaccine.
So I have heard, Melanie, that they want your insurance card to pay, if you have insurance, to pay for the administration of the vaccine?
I haven't-
Because I've been asked, in the form, I've asked to bring my insurance card when I made the appointment.
Where did you make your appointment?
Island Drug.
Okay. I only know Whidby Health system as well as, I don't know it as well as Island Drug.
I would put that as a follow-up.
We will follow up on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question. Okay.
With your mother at, at Whidby Health, there was no, she didn't have to, right, Janet?
My mother was really struggling with all of this. And so I had to sort of walk her through the process, even answering the questions when she got there. It's for those who are very elderly or have other issues, it's really tough. And there was no request for that as far as I can recall. I'm not sure if, if there's a reason why that is. We'll have to follow up on that. I've not heard that. And the next question is, so then how do we get the word out that the vaccines are free? I thought the word was out. It's in all the news stories. I think just every time you have a conversation with someone, tell them. There's, we'll, we'll add that to our messaging at the county level to make sure we overcome that perception. I didn't even know it was out there as a perception, so thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. I don't see it.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank our over 30 participants for joining us this evening. And a special thank you to the commissioners again, Commissioner St. Clair, Mr. Johnson, Commissioner Bacon.
You have a couple of hands up out there.
Hands up.
Well, they're applauding.
Oh, is that what it is? Oh, thank you.
Nathan has a hand up. Nathan, did you want to applaud us or you wanted to ask a question? See, Jill, Becky, I took over.
It's, it's what you do so well, Jill. You're, you're, you're our leader. Nathan, I'm looking for you in my list here. I think Nathan might have, Nathan Howard.
Well, that might have been on my side. I had a hand on Nathan. Sorry, Nathan.
Oh, now he says I did-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was me.
Okay. Okay.
Now Lynn Whitley has her-
Everybody.
I'm just moving my hand around here. I really want my colleagues to talk more, so I'm just going to, and, and we have a few more minutes. And so I'm just going to prompt them with some questions. Also, I mean, in term, in terms of the vaccine, we also took a stand on a population of people who were left behind. And maybe Janet wants to talk about that or Melanie. And then also our Board of Health encouraged our Community Health Advisory Board to do some work on social equity. So we, not, we stopped short of a resolution that just simply said racism is a public health issue. But what we did was say, we acknowledge that this is, is a truth and that what we've been done is instructed our Community Health Advisory Committee to work on these issues. And so maybe they want to talk about those two items because I really do feel like we're doing a good job of pulling populations forward that have historically been left behind.
Oh, that's a, that's a great question. So one of the pieces in the pandemic and one, so we talked about, I'm sure she won't mind my mother getting vaccinated. And one of the questions she was confused about is why are they asking my ethnicity? Why do they care? And I answered the question because they care to make sure that as we gather data about who's getting vaccinated, we can show as a state that we're reaching everyone in our state. And so that question about equity in, in delivery and access of healthcare is something that's been absolutely fundamental to who I am for 30 years of my career. And so Island County has taken that to heart through the guidance of, of advocates, through staff, and really are beginning to look at what, how do we address the issue of disproportionality and health disparities in our system of care? And when we talk about racism, there were those who had sort of a knee-jerk reaction to that, thinking that we were saying that everyone is a racist. And the reality is that's true and not true in some ways. We all carry within us our certain, you know, unintended biases and so forth. But what we really want to address are the issues of disproportionality. Why is it that in this pandemic that Latino communities have been disproportionately impacted? And interestingly enough, the second most impacted community in this pandemic in Washington State were Pacific Islanders. And that should matter in Island County where we have a high Filipino Pacific Islander population. It's the second highest beyond the Hispanic community. So understanding and recognizing that the data matters, that our approach is making sure that you'll see on the Island County website, occasionally you'll see posts and things in Spanish. It's making sure that we're creating that accessibility. I loved this phrase from a meeting I was in last week with the State Department of Health. And now I've lost the page, but it basically said, what we want to strive for in vaccine delivery is a program that is safe. is a program that is safe, safe, familiar and accessible. So when we look to, you know, inform people and educate them, use that trusted advocate model, talk to the communities where people are and really begin to build that familiarity, that accessibility and, and break down those barriers to access to care that exist institutionally. They're not, they, they may not be, they're not necessarily by intention. They may be by default, but that doesn't make them any less critical to our efforts. So this board has begun to engage in those conversations, all of us with different levels of, of, of thinking and understanding and perspective on this. But that, that dialogue at the Board of Health that was started last year, when we asked, when we declared, when we started to examine the concept of racism as a public health crisis, we continue, we intend to continue this year.
What, one of the things that makes Island County such an astonishing place to live is the activism and volunteerism in our, in our community. There are so many really strong and active organizations reaching a whole gamut of, of populations and interests. And so what I would, I would ask those of you who are listening to us tonight to, if you are a representative or you're in a board or a member of an organization that, that deals with underrepresented populations and you think that you would, would, would want, you and your organization would want to be, to help us to reach those populations. I would encourage you to contact your, your county commissioner and we will put you in connection with the proper group, whether it's at the county or it's at the, one of our partners, to make sure that we utilize your, your access and your talents and your interest to make sure that these people receive their vaccines.
We did have a comment from Kathleen Petrick, who said the, the vaccine is free, paid for by the federal government as was suggested, but the vaccine providers can charge an administrative fee. And would be health chose not to charge the fee. But maybe other providers might.
Thank you, Kathleen, for that, for, for looking that up for us. Thank you.
So when we talk about access, a pop, a letter that the board sent out this year, signed by the chair, is something else. We're not only talking about communities of color when we want to make sure equity and access. We were concerned as a board regarding the stages of the vaccine delivery and where people fell and discovering that people with developmental disabilities were in one of the later stages. People with developmental disabilities living in congregate care. And for many of us who recognize that, and that I think was covered by the paper and perhaps covered accurately, I think so, that those are folks who often have what we call comorbid health conditions. So they have additional health or their health frailties, health conditions that put them at risk. And so this board sent a letter this week to the Department of Health and the governor to say they should move up that population of disabilities. This is the idea that all, all lives have value and that the systems that we build and the structures and the services we deliver must address those barriers, whether, you know, it's my blind constituent who emails me pretty much weekly or it's a person with a disability or a parent who is trying to raise a child with a disability. We need to make sure that as we design these systems that we're, we're not leaving behind people who are most at risk.
Okay, here's a question that might be a clarification. What does it mean to say that racism is a health crisis?
What that's traditionally meant is that people of color have greater health disparities. They have higher more, higher infant mortality rates across our nation. So why is it that black babies die three times more often than white children? That's a health disparity. And what we believe is there are institutional reasons why that occurs. Everything from housing, discrimination in housing, it might be discrimination in healthcare and where you can get your healthcare. And so the, the concept of racism as a, as a public health crisis is about addressing those institutional barriers that may have inhibited people to have equal access to healthcare. And equal access to what we call the social determinants of health, which includes housing, access to healthy foods. So if I live in Detroit in a poor neighborhood, I may not have a grocery store anywhere in my community. The nearest grocery store may be 10 miles away. And so the only place I can buy food is at the local mini mart. And so my access to healthy food is what's called a social determinant of health. And I'm going to stop there because I could do this for two hours. This is something I'm very passionate about.
And these are populations that are more likely to live in multi generational households where there's just a lot of people and someone there has a greater chance of bringing home an illness. Also, also jobs, the type of jobs that are, that, where they come in contact with, you know, a lot of human beings. So with, with, that's, I think that's one of the reasons that COVID has been so devastating to some of these populations is because of those two things.
It's good, Becky, sorry.
Now we are at the end of questions again.
All right, well, it's 5:56. Let me take a minute to thank the commissioners one more time. And I just want to say, I'm, I'm so pleased that we had such a focus on social justice. And I think that we, we don't spend, it's not often at the forefront of our, of our work on Whitby. And I'm so happy to hear you all talk about, about your, your concerns in that area from the, from the Board of Health to vaccine distribution to, to just all, you're just that lens that you're showing us. Makes me feel proud. So thank you again for coming, everyone. And did I want to say anything else? I think that the county commissioner website has a wonderful meet the commissioners page that has wonderful contact issue, contact information for us to have easy contact with our commissioners. And I also want to thank your staff. Yes, Becky?
I just put the, it in the chat, the contact for the.
Great, excellent. Virginia, shout out to you. Thank you for your support for this event and your other staff members who have also talked to me a number of times over the phone. All right, so shall we call it a night? And I believe we can wave, some of us can wave. And we will see you all next year.
Thank you.
I hope maybe at the country club. Thank you, thank you. Okay, bye bye.